Ready?
Yep.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the back of the chamber, as well as an automatic external defibrillator is available as well. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we are going to go into our agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners first and do a, one of the presentations that is listed. So with that, roll call for the County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. With that, we will move to Presentations, and it is Presentation B, Presentation by Jerry Leahy for a Regional Award, and I will let Jerry give the specifics on it. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Jerry Leahy, Public Property. I'm going to go back about 15 months, and we came before this board to apply for CARES Act funding for the Health Center and the Corrections Department, and thankfully, this board approved a couple of large projects for improvements for HVAC and expanded lobby and sleep rooms and isolation rooms at the Health Center. And it was a very, very large project, very short timeframe, if you remember. We had about 90 days to comply with the regulations of a December 31 deadline, project completed and paid for. In other words, you couldn't, you couldn't work past December 31 and then pay. You had to complete the work, make the payment by December 31. So with that, Jeff McGill assembled a team of professionals to design and get prepared to take on this task. With that, we selected McCarthy Building Companies to do these projects, and again, came before this board for your approval. Back to the deadline, I think we were the only ones in the country that complied. We completed, and McCarthy completed by December 27. On the 28th, I think, I think Joe said, the Treasury Department extended six months. But we did the right thing. We got it accomplished. We improved the air quality at both facilities. And with that, have with me today Ryan Saywell, Senior Vice President of McCarthy Companies, and I'll let him take it from here because this is quite a story. And it's something that I felt this board should see and hear because you get a lot of requests, and sometimes not very positive. This, I think, is positive. Ryan?
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
So, this, this project is one that I would say, we, we got to it and we looked at what we had to do, and we wondered if this was even possible. You're going to see a short video that we prepared really for internal uses that'll speak a little bit more to that. But this project was up for an award against hundreds of projects, and this award was for excellence in quality management and teamwork, really focused on five different things: schedule, safety, quality, innovations, and problem solving, and then teamwork. And really, the thing I want to share before we play the video and let that do the talking is just how incredible this team was. And, and I'm not talking about McCarthy, but the, the entire team that Douglas County assembled. So the architects, the engineers, the architect was Carlson West Pavandra, Specialized Engineering Solutions, Morrissey Engineering, and then we had a couple of key trade partners that were on our team, Miller Electric and Waldinger. But really, Douglas County, Jerry and Jeff and their leadership and the rest of their team was what helped make this project go so well and be so successful. So, we have a little video that we'll share, but it's really to make the impossible possible. But great, great teamwork, and we appreciate it being part of this project. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We had a very limited window of opportunity to make the improvements we wanted to make.
Everyone was saying it was impossible. We got 90 days to get this done. Tomorrow I have 89.
We had the engineer record tell us right out the gate, this cannot be done. Trade partners showed up and they go, we don't know how we're going to do it.
We just rolled up a snowball and tossed it into hell. Now we'll see what chance it has.
This project is probably one of the kind you might not ever get a project like this in your life.
Douglas County, they had needs at two facilities in Omaha, Nebraska, Douglas County Corrections Center and County Health Center.
Both operational, both had to remain in service, couldn't be interrupted. Then we had COVID. Then we had the added risk that if it wasn't done by December 31st of 2020, the balance of scope that was in the contract would have to be done in McCarthy's own cost.
Desperate times, desperate measures, sir.
Basically went in, replaced an air handler, some cooling towers, a chiller, associated pumps, and then we renovated some bathrooms and made some new classrooms. I think at the height of the project, we were in right around 18 to 19 areas at once, so it was very challenging.
So we had various measures, keep it safe, hand washing stations, hand sanitizing stations, biweekly COVID tests, making sure the guys disinfect tools, stood six feet apart when possible, even flexi glass shields in between trades working.
If a crew obtained a positive test on a COVID, or one person did, that meant the whole crew was out. So, trade partners had to have another crew on standby in order to step in and pick up where that other crew left off.
Oh no, how many rounds you got?
Enough.
For at least three weeks, we were running 24-hour shifts, and that was seven days a week, and that was with our critical trade. So, again, there was, there was no time to mess around. If, if something came up, we had to react immediately.
Everything just went like clockwork.
The information that we received from McCarthy were very clear and direct, and everybody knew what they needed to do.
Daily coordination, daily scheduling, daily oversight of safety. We had amazing superintendents on both projects.
The biggest thing I'm proud of at the project is, we completed on time and everything's successful, but the trade partners and the owner all want to work with McCarthy again.
Every one of our partners, from the owner, engineer record, and trade partners, all gave testimony in one respect or the other that they appreciated the effort, they didn't think it could be done, and it was, and they can't wait to work with the team again. The engineer record said at the end of this project, McCarthy just raised the bar for other general contractors in this area, because several of them came and said that this physically could not happen, and we did it. So, yeah, it was mission impossible, that became possible.
Fate whispers to the warrior, the storm is coming. And the warrior whispers back, I am the storm.
Oh, that is good.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, for moving that up for the presentation, but I felt strongly that this was, and I've probably talked to a few of you during this whole project, and it, it was phenomenal, as you can tell by that little clip. But I miss those 7:00 AM Zoom meetings, weekly, sometimes daily.
Well, thank, thank you, Jerry, for bringing it to us, and thank you all for being here and starting our meeting off with, on a positive note. So, thank you very much. With that, we will move now back to a recess out of the Board of Commissioners and enter into the Board of Equalization. Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Friend. Motion passes seven to zero.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization, Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board.
I need a roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, January 25th, 2022, and Item B, Call for a Meeting Set Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, is Citizen Comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our resolutions. We have three resolutions D, E, and F. And, good morning, Mr. Goodwilly.
Good morning, Commissioner Borgeson. I would like to speak to Resolution D, and, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. I would like to speak to Resolution D, and I know there is somebody from the church that wants to speak. This is simply a late filed application for 2021 for the Ralston Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses. This is a church, as far as I know, it still is, and when it is used in these, these times, it's used as a church. They filed for exemption, exemption for many years running, and in Nebraska, what happens is, in years divisible by four, you file a full application, and that lasts until the next year divisible by four. In the intervening years, to keep your exemption, you file what's called a reaffirmation, essentially a renewal. In this instance, this church filed no renewal for 2021, although we are under no obligation to. We attempted to notify the organization on a number of different occasions. We still got nothing. The reason we're here today is because what did finally get the organization's attention is when somebody doesn't file and the time runs out, then we go to put a value on the property, and they get a variety of correspondence that says, okay, now your property is going to be valued at X. And if that happens before billing, then they get a tax bill, you know, in December or whenever the bills go out, and that suddenly focuses the mind wonderfully. Now, to be fair to this organization, this is one that had, over the years, asked us to send all their correspondence to the personal address of the person that was doing the paperwork for them. And in the interim, he moved, they didn't get the reminders. In any event, they finally got around to filing a 451A, the reaffirmation, earlier this month, because they're clearly out of time under the statute. We sent out a denial. The statute also gives organizations the due process right to protest such a denial to the County Board of Equalization, and here we are.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Sean James. I'm an attorney with Smith Slusky, Porin, and Rogers, 3555 Farnham, Suite 1000, Omaha, 68131. I'm here on behalf of the church. As Mr. Goodwilly said, there was a, a little confusion on the mailings that went out. In addition, a lot of things that went to the secretary was, she was no longer the secretary. So, we had a change in staff, we had COVID, where nobody was going actually physically to the building, and a few other things that stepped in. The, the church requests that you waive the taxes. They understand they owe a penalty, they will pay the penalty, but they respectfully request that you waive the $15,000 in taxes because it's a very small church, like 200 congregation in there at all. It would be devastating to this little facility if that happened. Any questions that I can answer?
So, this is more for Mr. Goodwilly, but, so, this, this church has had tax exemption in the past. Is that correct, you said?
It has.
Yeah.
It has, and I have no reason to, to believe it isn't a church. They're just late, and the statute is pretty rigid on that.
So, if this board grants the tax exemption, they would just have to pay the penalty, correct?
There is a, for every, typically exemption applications have to be filed on or before December 31st of the year prior to the year they seek the exemption. Statutorily, for each month they're late, there's a penalty of, I think it's 10% of what the taxes would be, or $100, whichever is less. And so, yes, there would be a late filing penalty. I think they've probably already gotten a property tax bill for 2021. If the board grants the exemption, there would be a rebuild for the penalty amount.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Mike. Can I ask a quick question in regard to?
Sure.
For 2021, how many, how many permissive exemption applications have been denied? Do you know off the top of your head?
You know, the, the way that, I don't off the top of my head, but I will walk you through how the process works. We send out a kickoff letter to everybody we had in the system in about mid-November of the year prior, saying, hey, time to file your exemption application. And then we take stock of what we've gotten in by about the middle of December, and we send a second letter out that says, hey, you got two weeks to file without penalty. And those go out to the people that we've not gotten an application from. So then we get a blur, I mean, a, a dump truck load of applications that lasts two weeks of December. We weighed through all of that, and then usually, at the end of March, first part of April, we send another reminder to those that still haven't filed. And then finally, around the end of May, 1st of June, we send another letter to those who have still not filed. And usually, at that point, it's down to about 70 or 80 that haven't. I would say, in any given year, we have probably, you know, 15, 20, 30 that don't bother to file anything or make any contact with us at all, that we put on the list to add value to. And then of those, we'll have a handful like this that file late and say, oh, my God, you know, we forgot. Please don't whack us for the value.
Okay. The, the reason I ask a question is, I'm wondering if we're, if we're steering down a road here that was just a one-off, right?
Well, there are not many of these, no.
Right. I also would like to, just from an institutional knowledge standpoint, with the, if any other commissioner would want to weigh in, I mean, what type of precedence are we, are we setting here as a Board of Equalization? I don't have any experience with this, at least not this specifically. So, if anybody wanted to weigh in, that's fine, but.
I, I can give you history because our, our very good friend, Commissioner Mike Boyle, is not with us any longer, but he was the champion of, for folks who missed a deadline that still qualified, would make the motion that we grant that exemption. And again, it was a handful, again, mostly smaller churches. I would say 99% of them were address confusion errors, but it was granted. The thing that we cannot waive is the penalty. They have to pay the penalty.
Okay, that helps.
Well, and, and in fact, if you decide to go down that path, I would encourage you to deal with the exemption application itself rather than characterize this as a waiver of taxes.
Right.
I think Theresa Urick over there would have a stroke if you characterized it as a waiver of taxes, because that is specifically prohibited.
Right.
To boards and commissions and people like that.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mary Ann, I was going to say exactly what you said. Mike Boyle was the champion on this. How long has this church existed, if you don't mind me asking?
Do you have the answer to that, Michael?
I don't know, but we've been getting applications from them since...
And there isn't anyone here from the church?
It's, it's probably 10, 15, 20 years. It's been some time.
Is there someone here from the church who could?
Here they go. I'll step aside.
If you don't mind, is that okay, Mary?
Yeah, that's fine. Good morning.
Good morning. Justin Davis, Ralston Congregation. We have been tax exempt since 1970.
1970?
1970.
Wow.
And we have been approved for 2022. It was an address mix-up, that's what caused it. Any other questions?
I'd make a motion to allow for the...
Grant the tax exemption?
Yes.
And the other?
But that's going to change. Updates. Very good.
Mike?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We, we've had a motion to grant the exemption.
Okay.
And a second, are there any other questions or comments? Again, this granting of the exemption, if it passes, will still mean the church has to pay the penalty. Okay?
And I would also mention, it's not in my district or anything else, but I just feel we should do this.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Please vote.
Madam Chair, just on Item D?
On Item D, yes.
Okay, let me update this real quick. Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next are the Resolutions E, F, E and F.
Approve E and F and adjourn.
Any questions or comments on E and F and adjourn? Okay, please vote.
Commissioners Morgan and Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, we, I now need a motion to reconvene from recess and go back into the Board of Commissioners meeting?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting Held Tuesday, January 25th, 2022, and Item B, Approval of Claims Submitted for Payment Process Through Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded, I mean, yeah, by Morgan, then seconded by Commissioner Rogers. She threw me off. Yes, I saw that. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the Consent Agenda, Items A through G. Please note that Item C will be taken separately. So, it's A, B, D, E, F, and G, unless Commissioners have other items they'd like to pull. A motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Give me one moment, please. Okay, thank you. Commissioners Rogers, Friend, and Morgan. Motion passes seven to zero.
The Consent Agenda, Item C, is a resolution approving Carlson West Pavandra Architects for Douglas County Correctional Community Mail Health, Community Mail Health Programming Study. I am pulling that from the consent so that we could have some discussion on this. It should have been placed under our Finance Committee, since it has to do with previous CARES and ARPA money. And so, I'm going to finish the other agenda items, and then we'll take it up under the Finance Committee. So, with that, we have recognition, and I don't know if, he's here. Okay, so, we'll move to Citizen Comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
My name is Andrew Solomon of 7748 Western Avenue. I was going to try to explain, I've testified last week on here. This is going to have to zoom out a bit more. Yeah. I, I've testified in front of the City Council many times on the mask issues on there, and I probably should have explained that a little bit further last time. I'm glad to say that cases are coming down, but they're happening nationwide, and a lot of people will take a look at a piece of data and say, oh, this proves the mask worked. I want to show you what is actually happening in the background. By the time the cases started going up to 400 to 500 to 600 at the end of December and hit 1,000 by January 1st, people like me in the community who are part of many organizations, we get people calling up some email that says, well, are we going to meet? Are we not going to meet? Are we going, if we're going to meet, are we going to all wear masks or are we not going to wear masks? It starts a whole polarization, and some people say, I'm not going to show up if we have to wear masks because I got asthma and it just irritates me. I got other people who say they won't show up unless everyone's wearing a mask. And then this item here that I'm showing you, this was actually printed in the World Herald, not Alex Jones. This was printed in the World Herald. It comes from an organization promoting respirators. And the point of this is it assumes that there's no airborne carrying of the virus. Two people next to each other for 15 minutes with no mask will get infected after 15 minutes. Wearing the surgical mask? If both of them are wearing it, 60 minutes. Well, our meetings are three hours long, and we're eating in the middle of it. What good is a mask going to do? Yet, I got people in the office, in these groups, and they're saying, well, we need to wear masks. They're going to save us. And I said, no, they're not. We're going to be there for three hours. What are we going to do? So, we end up canceling the meeting. And this rolls down again every time the cases go up. And the people say, oh, cases going up. We put on the mask. Oh, great. Oh, great. Cases go down, and they assume it's the mask. No, it's because people panic and start canceling meetings because it's so dang polarizing. meetings, because it's so dang polarizing. We spend a lot of money on these paper surgical masks, right? But these have become a promotional item. This comes from the Micro Foundation. It's known as a gator. It costs $18. There's a market for this stuff. So anytime someone tells you the masks work, I kind of wonder, do they realize that there is a marketing scam behind this all? At best, these surgical masks, face-to-face, will give you supposedly 60 minutes of protection. That's 45 minutes better than nothing. So we're slowing the spread down by 45 minutes? I'm sorry. If this is our idea of slowing the spread, it's doing far more damage to the rest of the community in ways we cannot begin to comprehend. And I want the commissioners to be aware of that. I don't think you've heard the debates about it. I don't know how much you've heard from the City Council about it, and all the problems that occurs. But it's a real problem. Sociologically, psychology, psychiatric problems are going to be caused by us, and we're not taking any of that into consideration. And yet we're said, slow this back. We've been doing this for two years. If we slow the spread of this virus any longer, we'll actually be doing this in 2035. We need better solutions. We need more hospital beds. We need better treatments. But here's some health directors telling me, or some other person telling me, masks work. We need all wear masks. I said, you have no idea what polarization you're entering into. You have no idea how many people have difficulties with these masks. Fogging up glasses, they're told that these N95 things will work, yet even with the usage of theirs, there's a difference between 25 hours and 25,000 hours? That's a problem. So if we think that's a solution, we need to be thinking outside the box. We need something better than this, because this just doesn't work very well. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I might be a little bit disjointed here. I thought the meeting might be over before I got started. I've got my stuff together. You know, the state of Nebraska has a constitution. I don't know if it's been reprinted or not, because they have changed the rules for citizen input. Down there now, if you want it in the record, probably you have to be a formal letter of some sort, maybe a week before the hearing date, or you have to be there physically in person. Now, excuse me, with all this hullabaloo nationally about voting restrictions, because people may not be able to get there in person, so you can mail it in or have somebody drop it off for you, I think that's kind of an unconstitutional rule change, but it will be coming down here, because I think you folks have to follow state procedures and rules. Basically, their laws. That must be a law now, I guess. Anyway. We have a run for the bunny going here. I enjoyed the presentation earlier with the background music from, I can't quite remember the TV show. It was one of my favorites. Oh, and Ted Cruz, yes. Very nice way to open the meeting today, but I wonder how much that cost the taxpayers. And quite frankly, when is the federal money going to run out? You know, that federal money is ours, came out of my pockets as well as yours, and we're all scurrying for it. Kind of like three blind mice, run for the brass ring, run for the money while it's still there. I think we need to put a stop to some of that. If you people couldn't get things passed in this county for updating the county health building, the hospitals, the schools, various physical plants for various 501(c)(3) organizations, you're shirking your duty. That's local stuff. We don't run to the federal government for that. You don't steal my tax dollar money for that. We might need that to fight a war. So let's stop it. Be the first in the River City, right here in River City, in the middle of the nation, to say, we're going to stop raiding the federal bankroll. A little disjointed. For the last two weeks, I've gone down to the state legislature, and I want to talk about this, even if I do get interrupted, because I might not get to the legislative issues part of the meeting today. But I was there two weeks in a row in regards to election things, and the Convention of States, they call, well, excuse me, LR14 is about a convention. It's about Article 5. They passed it. It is not a call for a constitutional convention. For two weeks in a row, I had to listen to some insidious, stupid, uninformed testimony on the state floor, legislative floor. I'm just as dumb as those people. Founding fathers never said you could have another constitutional convention. They never intended it. What they did intend was when my county board is out of control, not doing what they're supposed to do by law or anything else, that I have the right and the duty to throw it off, alter it, change it. They really did not mean another revolution, folks. They didn't mean for me to march in here with guns. They meant by proposing an amendment. Read Article 5. It says only to propose. But down there on the state legislature and around Omaha, people have been convinced by the left-wing progressives of this nation and their best practices that it is going to be a constitutional convention. They're going to lock the doors, and oh my God, we'll become a democracy or an oligarchy. Excuse my theatrics, but you yourselves have theatrics up there. World Herald has some articles, too. They also are very uninformed about it. They say that Nebraska lawmakers called for a Convention of States. Excuse me. Read it. The World Herald, the state legislature, you folks do not call a constitutional convention.
Time. Thank you, Larry.
Is that time up?
Yes.
Oh, boy, he seemed like he got more money. I'll end with this. Did you notice...
Thank you, Larry. You were done.
Did you notice that when he dropped the mask, you could understand him better?
Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you, Larry. Please leave the podium, Larry. Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Thank you. Yep, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Good morning.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Adam Carlson. I live at 3815 South 190th Street. I've been a resident of Douglas County for 12 years, an employee of Douglas County as a registered environmental health specialist for seven years, and most relevant for today, I'm here as a representative of the Health Department Employees Association. Also with me today is Chad Wetzel, an epidemiologist for the Health Department for the last eight years. As you probably well aware, the employees of the Health Department have been going through an epic struggle over the last two years. In January of 2020, we were thrown in the ring with COVID and are still fighting that to this very day. I'd like to brief you on some of the extraordinary work that my coworkers have been doing. The employees of the Health Department created and maintain a distribution center that has distributed 15.5 million pieces of PPE, a call center that has received and counseled over 65,000 calls, our vaccination clinics that have given over 217,000 life-saving vaccinations, and an epidemiology team that has essentially worked around the clock for two straight years. These operations have been facilitated and carried out by employees below the supervisor level. The PPE distribution center was created by an air quality and an environmental health specialist. The call center built and ran by our community health educators, and the vaccination clinics were conducted by our nurses without an acting supervisor, with all the employees of the Health Department Employees Association filling in where necessary to make these centers operate with great success. You can imagine the great burden that this has been putting on the employees of the Health Department. We have literally given our blood, sweat, and tears to defeat this pandemic. Our employees have sacrificed their personal health and time with their families in lieu of working long days and weekends in the fight against COVID. We have had employees that have had clinically diagnosed mental breakdowns, and nurses that have literally been spit on by angry members of the public. This burden has begun to take a toll on the employees. This toll is evident by the high amount of turnover we are experiencing. Employees are now leaving the Health Department at an alarming rate, citing stress and burnout of COVID as the main contributing factor for leaving the field. At this point, the Health Department administration is not able to hire employees fast enough to keep up with the departure of our employees. This has left our department struggling, not only with the extra hardship of the COVID response, but doing so understaffed. That all brings me to why I'm here today. Right now, the HDEA is currently in negotiations for the upcoming collective bargaining agreement. It is our understanding that as we go through negotiations with Mr. Sam Martin, that he brings any monetary matters to this board for review. If this is incorrect, please let me now know my error. The current offer to the HDEA is 2.5% raise per year for a contract of three years. This is a very disappointing offer. For the year of 2022, the Douglas County Board awarded itself a 4% raise. In an article from the Omaha World Herald in September of 2019, a commissioner of this board said that the increased salaries will keep pace with the cause of inflation. So let's talk inflation. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the All Items Index rose 7% for the 12 months ending in December, the largest 12-month increase since 1982. In the same World Herald article, the commissioner also stated it's fair compensation. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, for a department that has gone through hell and back over the past two years with no end in sight, and piling on the unprecedented inflation rate, 2.5% is not fair compensation. Another concern that we have is the duration of the contract being three years. In an extremely unstable nature of the public health profession, we aren't sure what tomorrow is going to bring, let alone three years from now. For this reason, we are requesting a one-year contract so that we may have the opportunity to reevaluate our situation in our ever-changing profession. I would also like to thank the Board today for approving the pandemic-related premium pay.
One minute.
This pay was a welcome message of good news when it seems like we've only received bad in recent memory. Unfortunately, this pay has an inherent flaw. The federal stipulations of this pay exclude employees that are working from home. As we have recently experienced, variants such as Omicron have forced many Health Department employees to quarantine due to close contacts and have to work from home, effectively rendering this pandemic pay useless. For these reasons, we are asking the Board to consider hearing another proposal from the HDEA through Mr. Sam Martin. In this proposal, we will ask for a collective bargaining agreement for the duration of one year with a minimum raise of 3.5%. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Hughes, if we could get your public support on this, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Next, anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go back up to the recognition proclamations. We have one, a recognition of John Solano of the staff at the Douglas County Garage for the excellent work they do in keeping vehicles in top shape so that the Douglas County Sheriff's Office can respond to the emergency and non-emergency calls for service. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chief Deputy Wayne Hudson, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. If you have a resolution, could you read it?
I was going to say, do you want to read this?
I'll read it. Yeah. Hopefully, the print's big enough. Whereas Mr. John Solano has his career with the Office of Douglas County Purchasing on February 11, 2013, serving as a garage supervisor, and whereas during his over 8.8 years at the Douglas County Garage, Mr. Solano has supervised the highest standards of vehicle build quality and readiness the Douglas County Sheriff's Office has ever enjoyed. Whereas Mr. John Solano, with the assistance of Tim Lydic, the lead builder, Randy Nickel, mechanic, Joel Nicola, mechanic, Robert Venimus, mechanic, Rick Hanna, parts, was at the forefront of the metamorphosis of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office fleet from that of a basic no-frills employee transport system to one of a highly recognized brand. Whereas the Douglas County Sheriff's Office relies heavily functioning vehicles to respond to emergency calls for service from the public, whereas the Douglas County community benefits from the operationally-ready, equipped, utilized by Douglas County Sheriff's Office employees to consistently deliver their premier law enforcement services to the Douglas County, Omaha metro area. Now, therefore, be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that Mr. John Solano, Tim Lydic, Randy Nickel, Joel Nicola, Robert Venimus, and Rick Hanna are thanked for their services to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. I believe this is going to be a old resolution. There was an updated one. There should be dusting that was added to this one, but we'll make that correction.
Okay.
Just briefly, real quick here, Commissioner Rogers and I attend the same church. Our pastor, Reverend Backes, is known for saying, at times, we must say thank you. There are individuals that work in county government behind the scenes that isn't always at the forefront. Well, this is critical for our organization. With John Solano and the vehicles, we rely heavily on our vehicles to respond to emergency and non-emergency services. For example, emergency, everyone knows our cruisers. We have to have our cruisers in tip-top shape to respond to priority calls. If not, the public is in danger. Non-emergency, we transport inmates all across Nebraska and throughout the United States. We are legally responsible for their care and custody, so we have to have reliable vehicles on the interstate. So for that, on behalf of Sheriff Wheeler, myself, and the men and women of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, we would like to tell John Solano and all the employees of Douglas County Garage, thank you.
That's excellent. Is there a motion to approve? Any other comments? Thank you for bringing this forward. You're right. It's nice that we take time to tell our employees thank you. So, very good. Please vote. And if you can get with Karen, she'll fix the resolution.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our other presentation, which is our COVID-19 update and COVID-19 vaccination plan update presented by Dr. Lindsay Hughes. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. And I apologize. I've been losing my voice for a couple days, so I am not sick. Just have a frog. All right. We continue to have high transmission in Douglas County for COVID-19. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. But I do have a little bit of good news, which I am thrilled to be able to share with you. As you can see, our total number of cases per 100,000, as a seven-day total, has dropped to under 1,000. I never thought I would see the day that I would be thrilled just to see that number under 1,000, but that is fantastic. As you can see, our trajectory coming down does appear fairly steep, which is also good news. I hope that that trend continues. I'm going to keep my fingers crossed. I'm going to keep encouraging our community to keep doing the right things to help that continue. I do know in some other parts of the United States, that downward trajectory has kind of stalled out a little bit, so I hope that we are the exception and that we keep moving down. But in any case, we are very happy to see this trend. In terms of who is testing positive right now for COVID, you can see as our trends come down, of course, we're seeing decreases across all age groups, which is also really great news. You can see that the largest proportion currently is still in those young adult age groups, so those 20 to 29 and 30 to 39, so the turquoise and light blue colors. Our pediatric population is decreasing in terms of cases, which is also wonderful news. We do still have quite a few cases happening within that age group, but it is heartening to see that they are starting to decrease as well. Hospitalizations have, it appears to have stabilized perhaps a little Hospitalizations have, it appears to have stabilized perhaps a little bit. We'd like to see those decrease as well. However, there's usually a lag time between what those case counts are doing and what hospitalizations do, so we can keep an eye on that and hopefully, we're going to see hospitalizations follow a similar trend in terms of that decrease. Right now, we're stabilized in the upper 80s. We've dipped down to 85 and even below that a couple times, so that's really good news. However, I do still want to make sure that it's clear that that is total capacity across the entire system. We definitely still have hospitals that are struggling mightily under the weight of COVID. We still have hospitals that are completely full at times. And so, I just want to make sure that it's clear that while we're on a good trajectory, this is by no means back into a sustainable situation. So right now, our occupancy rate for hospitalizations is 87%. Our ICU capacity is 82%. Our pediatric is 80%. We currently have 84, I'm sorry, I misspoke, 433 total inpatients that have COVID, and 22 of those are pediatric cases. So while our pediatric cases certainly are decreasing, we're seeing a higher level of serious illness for some of those pediatric cases. You can see our case counts over on the left are starting to come down a little bit, so that's good, and just keep in mind that these are staffed beds, so it's kind of a moving target a little bit as staffing levels can change fairly frequently. And then our ventilator usage has essentially stabilized in the upper 40s for a number of people on a ventilator related to COVID. We continue to add deaths each week. I am expecting by the end of this week, we will have topped 1,000 deaths in Douglas County for the pandemic. That is a pretty serious number, and I'm hoping that we can continue to slow down the death, the number of deaths that are occurring. We're still seeing a few, quite a few tests happening in Douglas County. However, our test positivity has started to come down, so again, that's good news, but we also have fewer people that are actually coming in to test and that are doing instead the home tests that are available. We're still happy people are testing wherever they're getting it done so that they can be informed about their own status and whether they need to stay away from other people for a few days. Our rate or our test positivity has dropped to 21.9% from close to 30, so we're seeing that come down as well, which is good. In terms of breakthroughs, that number continues to edge up just a little bit. It's not a fast rate, but I think I have talked about this the last couple of weeks I've been into, just that's not unexpected with the appearance of Omicron and the fact that that does evade some of our immunity, not all of it. Certainly, our vaccines still work really well at preventing hospitalizations and deaths, which you can, you can see, you know, when you're looking over at this little chart down in the right corner, that is our death breakthrough cases or deaths that occur in breakthrough cases. That has remained pretty stable at .02. So if it was not preventing serious illness and deaths, we would see that number increasing more quickly than we do, so that's great news. So 8.6, and again, just for those who haven't looked at this data before, that is the proportion of fully vaccinated people who have had a positive COVID test after being fully vaccinated. Our vaccination efforts are ongoing, and I can say that the number of people coming in to get vaccines has dropped off. Things are a little slower. We've been able to move staff around just a little bit because we don't need quite as many people for clinics. So you can see, this was really our big peak up in here, when we had a lot of people coming in for those vaccines, and then it has started to drop off after that. Currently, we are at 65.3% for all of our Douglas County residents being fully vaccinated, so we have a little bit of room there to improve. We want to continue to see that rate go up, and then you'll notice underneath there, we've added, we've added a data point for population with boosters or a third dose. We don't have a great way to separate out a third dose and a booster, so I apologize for that, but we at least have something to show you. So 45.6%. Now, we know that with Omicron, the most common variant now, that with just your initial series, some of that immunity falls off. Omicron is able to evade a little bit of that, so you're a little bit more likely to have a breakthrough case with Omicron if you've been vaccinated, but what we found is that if you boost, that immunity level really goes back up, so you get much better protection after that booster. So we would like to see that 45.6% continue to grow so that we have, again, a good, solid immunity base for people here in the community. The age is 12-plus because boosters and third doses are not approved under that age just yet.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Could I just remind those on Zoom to please mute? Thank you.
Thank you. You can see here, our adolescent population, we continue to grow slowly there in terms of vaccination rate, 64.7% fully vaccinated. And then for our five to 11-year-olds, 28.6% are fully vaccinated, so that definitely leaves quite a bit of room for transmission to happen in that age group, and as you saw, with 22 hospitalizations in pediatrics, that's quite a bit higher than what we were reporting even back with the Delta wave. So we certainly would like to see this grow so that we can make sure that we're getting better protection in that age group and not seeing hospitalizations and severe outcomes for those kiddos. And I just want to remind also that kids also can get long COVID. They can have ongoing symptoms for months that can be very detrimental to their learning and their development. There are also other conditions that can be spurred by having had COVID-19 for them, so seeing higher rates of diabetes and things like multi-inflammatory syndrome for kids, both things that can be very serious outcomes for those kiddos. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, even though we do have a fairly low number, it's high for us, 22 is a very high number of pediatrics compared to what we were at three months ago. 22 doesn't sound like a high number, but you really need to think about the long-term implications for each of those kiddos that's suffering from a serious disease. All right, and I think with that, I am ready to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. If I heard you right, the positivity rate is currently 21.9%? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And the breakthrough cases have gone up again to 8.6%?
Repeat that? I'm sorry.
Breakthrough cases?
Yes. 8.6.
8.6%?
Mm-hmm.
Which is up a little.
Yes.
The booster shot, that's when you say the people with the third shot, you mean the booster shot, right?
So if you remember back when they approved the boosters and the third shots initially, they did make a distinction between a third shot and a booster. So a third dose was what we were, what we administer to those who are immunocompromised. So essentially, their full series isn't done until they've had that third shot. The booster is for everybody else. It's a third shot or a second shot if you've got J&amp;J. It accomplishes basically the same thing, it's just done in different populations. So you can look at them concurrently, just keeping in mind that they kind of had different, they were done for different reasons. But they accomplish the same thing. They boost immunity regardless of whether we're calling it a third shot or a booster.
Okay, so the overall population is 65.3% vaccinated with two, fully vaccinated, two shots?
Correct, or one if they had Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Right.
Yes.
The population with that plus a third shot or a booster is 45.6?
Correct. And that's what we call up-to-date. If you've had your booster, now you're up-to-date.
Okay. We heard earlier, you probably, I think you were here for this, that elements of the Douglas County Health Department staff have been leaving. Is that, is that a significant problem with Douglas County Health Department staff?
We've had a number of people leave over the past probably year. I can't speak for the whole year. I can speak for about six and a half months of that. We have definitely had people seek employment elsewhere, leave the department for a variety of reasons. Oftentimes, in exit interviews that I hold with those staff, if they're wanting to do one, they do mention just the level of burnout. They're exhausted. They're overwhelmed, they're exhausted, they're dealing with constant negativity, which is really unfair to them because they're just doing their jobs. They're trying to make the community safer. They're trying to help everyone live a healthy and productive life. That's all they're there for, and they get, they get a lot of pushback for that, and at some point, they have to make a decision whether that's something that they're, is it worth it or not? Lack of a better way to put it.
Yeah, that's very concerning. You know, we've heard from other departments and the society at large, the economy, that there are staff shortages all over the place, you know, due to the COVID pandemic. You have an authorized level of staffing and you have an actual level that you have today. What's the difference in?
Commissioner Kavanaugh, could I ask that you stay to the updated part of the vaccine? We're not really supposed to be talking about person now, so just the update on the COVID numbers, please.
We're talking about the health department.
Right, we're talking about, the agenda item says COVID-19 update.
I'll tell you what, I'll follow up with you. If Commissioner Borgeson isn't concerned and doesn't want to hear about the staffing at our health department during the pandemic.
One minute.
I'll follow up with you individually. I appreciate, you know, the work that you're doing, but I understand that staffing is a concern, and the health department's on the front line of combating the pandemic, so the staff at the health department is on the front line of combating the pandemic, and that's a concern to me if they're leaving because of pandemic-related conditions. So we'll come back to that. That's a big public health concern, and I think that that deserves discussion. We have a little bit of a downturn, or actually kind of a significant downturn, I see on the dashboard, just in terms of total number of cases, and you mentioned this, per 100,000 is now, it shows 946 on the dashboard that I'm looking at, but that seems to precipitously drop just in the last week.
Time.
Welcome back.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks again for your presentation, and I appreciate everything that you're doing for us. I know it's very tough. And once again, just want to bring up, I read an interesting analogy of comparing the Omicron versus the Delta variant and as far as its impact, that, so Omicron, of course, is spread much more easily, transmissible much more easily, so a lot more people get it, maybe asymptomatic, or they may have, be unfortunate enough to have the deadly symptoms with it too, whereas Delta was, is more, if you, if you got it, you were just knocked down, but it wasn't nearly as contagious. So it's kind of like comparing a tornado to a hurricane. So Delta's like a tornado where it runs through a path and it just kills everything in its path, and Omicron's more like the hurricane where there's a widespread effect, but it's, since the volume of effect is so, is so much more, but only a few of smaller percent goes, is affected by it. But what we have to understand is when you look at the raw numbers, they could be the same. So in other words, you might have 100 people that got, that got Delta and 90%, 90% of them end up in the hospital, whereas with Omicron, you could have 1,000 people who could get the virus, but a much smaller percent of them could end up in the hospital, but it's still 90 people.
Yep.
So I think, I think that's the thing is, as someone who, again, works in a hospital system, all of this to me is about flattening that curve. And so it's very hopeful to see the number of Omicron cases go down just because we can start to see how the number of beds in the hospital are not becoming as full, which will allow us to get back into doing business as usual, which means we can do, do your knee surgery, we can do the things that had to be delayed for a little bit. So, so this trend is very reassuring, so I just want to just make that comment that we have to think of Omicron. It's out there, it's, we're dealing with it, but the numbers in the hospital, they're still high, so until we get down to those levels, we still need to take the same precautions that you've recommended. And then just another thing, I know, again, the mask mandate has always been a topic of discussion, so could you just repeat the parameters that you were looking for so that until the point is that we could decrease the times that we're wearing masks?
Absolutely, and I am eager as well to make sure that we get that out or be able to stop that as soon as possible. So this is great to see this decrease. So the first one of those metrics is this, this red graph right here, seven-day total number of cases per 100,000. We want that to be at 200 or below. So that is about right here, which is where we were in late October, early November, under 200. For hospitalizations, we want to have a week at least of sustained 85% or below for capacity. That's this line right here, so we're not quite there, but we're trending, in both metrics, we're trending in the right direction, so that's hopeful.
So it's both parameters that you want to see?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. And then this is just more, just your opinion on what you've, you've been seeing in your position. First of all, a fair number of folks got the J&amp;J shot, and I know those of us who got Moderna or Pfizer, we kind of know what, what steps we should be taking. I don't feel like the information is as clear about J&amp;J, so boosting, is that given as a primary vaccine still? We just haven't heard much about it.
So the primary vaccine for J&amp;J is still the one shot, but then we, they do recommend that you get a booster the six months later, and that can be with anything. It doesn't have to be with another J&amp;J. You can get Moderna, you can get Pfizer, but recommending that that, basically that that happened, especially given that the efficacy for J&amp;J really hasn't ever been as high as the other vaccines that are available.
Yeah, we just, I just feel like we just haven't heard as much about it.
Yeah.
And then the studies, there are studies out there for a fourth, a second booster. Can, do you know anything about that?
So nothing official yet. It's certainly possible that we may need a third booster. You know, this certainly could become something where, you know, to keep it at an endemic level, we need maybe an annual shot. We don't have, we don't have the solid data on it yet in terms of what those recommendations will look like, so we don't know yet if we're going to need a shot every year like we do with the flu, if it's going to be every six months, what that might look like. So as more of that data and science comes out, we'll make sure to keep you updated on it.
And then the last one has to do with the latest variant, you know, B2A, I think it is?
Yes, VA2.
VA2.
Yes, so it's basically a subvariant of Omicron, and it spreads about like Omicron, perhaps a tiny bit more contagious, but.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks again for this. Just wanted to run through the, you know, the basic metrics that you bring to us every week. The total vaccinated population is now 65.3%. That's people with two shots, right?
Correct, or one if it's Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Exactly.
Yes.
And of that, the subset would be 45.6 with the full number of shots and a booster.
Up-to-date, basically, yeah. That's correct.
So we have had a total of 137, 614 positive cases in the Douglas County population, of which 991 people have died.
Correct.
I think you indicated we're probably going to go past 1,000 here fairly quick.
I'm pretty sure, this week.
That's very unfortunate, and I'm sure everybody would join me in expressing condolences to the families and friends of those, nearly 1,000 of our fellow citizens and residents who have died as a result of this pandemic. That's very tragic. The idea that this is coming down, I'm just trying to look forward maybe a little bit. The idea that this is coming down, I'm just trying to look forward maybe a little bit. Is that going to, do you think, it fell off very, very precipitously in the last week or two. Is that trend lively, likely to continue in the near intermediate future?
We sure hope so. Like I said in the beginning, in some places it has, that, that steep decline has slowed some. That certainly could happen here. I think the fact that we do have a layered approach right now is helping that come down quickly. So I think if we, if we can continue pulling together as a community and doing the right thing, I think we can keep that trajectory going down.
And that's, you know, really encouraging and I, I want to commend you and the health service workers at our community for, for helping that. When you talk about this layered approach, could you just let the public know real quick here again, what that layered approach is?
Sure. So vaccinations are certainly our most potent tool for controlling this. So continuing to get those vaccinations, wearing masks when you're in crowded spaces and in public spaces, making sure that you're staying home when you're sick, or if you've been exposed, you know you've been exposed, making sure you stay home. Testing to make sure that you're not sick. If you wake up feeling under the weather, or if you've been exposed, testing five days later to see what your status is so you know to stay home. Keeping physical distance when you're out in public also remains very important. So, you know, it's not just one thing that helps that. It's, it's all of these steps, all of these different layers that we kind of put in place to stop it. So it's not one silver bullet. It's a whole lot.
Great. Well, thank you and thank the public healthcare workers that work for you, for all you do, to help us in this tough time.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Hughes, there was, there were two statements that I want to just make some clarification on, if you can help me, and I want to make sure. So we said early in the meeting, in respects to points being made about the mask wearing, the statement I've got written down is, in regards to some of these comparison about the mask piece, I mean, in my interpretation of that, I want to clear this up for the public because yeah, I understand the public has frustration about where we're at. But, you know, I think part of this is all information open and interpretation of it. So one statement that concerned me, I want to clear up, is the, is the mass comparison and time in a meeting and I guess effectiveness. I think, I want to make sure I'm noting if I'm off on this, that, you know, taking that statement as is, is not complete because you're not considering other factors of mitigation as been stated here today of layering, which is distance, which is ventilation, which is vaccination. And the mask piece there is an un, it's not a true representation of the effectiveness to some degree. It's being framed as if the mask is the end all to be all and nobody has ever said that it was the end all to be all. It is a mechanism to slow down, like the vaccine is not going to stop you from being affected. It prevents you from the dire circumstances. Is that a fair statement?
That is correct. And you know, they're fantastic for source control. They also provide some protection to others around a person who might be a source. But if everybody in the room is wearing good source control, there's really nowhere for it to go. So that's, you're absolutely right. There are a lot of factors that come into play with that.
Okay. Another statement that was made was the need for more hospital beds. And I wanted to make sure I wrote that one down correctly. So I, I'm just saying this for the public that before COVID hit, people were trying to get rid of hospital beds because of the way the industry was changing. That may have, may be some consideration, but you know, the fact of saying we need more hospital beds is not likely just because we don't build a hospital in enough time. By the time you build a hospital, hopefully we will be out of this into another stage. So I say this because all of this is getting framed up and taken on life of its own. There's a bit of speculation and some, I don't know how much actual fact, but there's a whole lot of circumstances around it. So you, you're just not going to build any hospital beds. That's just like saying in circumstances I've heard, well, we can cure ourselves by just hiring more healthcare workers. That's not just going to happen. There's a whole lot of other econ, economic circumstances and other things that are there to some degree. So that I'm not so much asking on, but we're not in a position to comment on some statements. I don't want to comment on that now while it's relevant.
Sure.
You're not going to solve this crisis by building more hospital beds. The whole intent is to get up space upstream from it. And if you were to build more hospital beds, you don't have the workers, the staff who we have now. So that's just not going to happen.
That is absolutely true. There are people not just leaving their place of employment, but leaving their professions. Nurses and doctors are leaving their professions. So there are fewer doctors and nurses and healthcare professionals to hire to actually take care of people taking up those beds. So no, it's not as, it's not as simple as just, you know, open, opening up a lot of hiring and getting lots of, lots of people. It's, it's much harder than that.
So I just want to say, again, I want to repeat, I understand the frustration. You know, sometimes there's a little bit of sacrifice that has to be done, but I just want to say that the, the mask comparison here, you know, that was heard today is just like saying, at least to me, then I might as well not wear a seatbelt, you know, to some degree, because you can put a mask on and be in a room, there's still a risk. You can put a seatbelt on. But if you drive 100 miles an hour and you hit something, that seatbelt is not going to do too much. There's a whole lot of other examples you can do to some degree, but I just want to put this all in perspective. Again, I understand the frustration, but you know, some of it is a little too dramatic to take from up here, just for a momentary point of inconvenience to try to get a whole society through a period of time.
I find wearing shoes inconvenient, but I still have to wear them to go into a restaurant. So, yeah.
Time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the, again, for the information, Dr. Hughes. And it was nice talking to you last week, at least through email. Thank you for the information in that regard. Real quick, I, we kind of broached the mask mandate a little bit. And one of the things that you and I were talking about, or the dialogue that we had going in one of our meetings, at least when you presented the, the mask mandate, is I brought up, I brought up my concerns about potential enforcement going forward. Do you have any numbers? Do you have any understanding at this point about what type of citations or how many citations or penalties have been issued in violation of the mask mandate that you, that you implemented?
I don't think we've issued any citations yet. So typically what happens is when we get, we get a call, you know, a complaint essentially that somebody isn't, isn't following the mask mandate. We prefer to work with those businesses and provide, you know, a conversation, ask them, you know, to put up a sign. Really, you know, we're not expecting, we're not expecting workers to be confrontational with their patrons or anything like that. It's really, hey, let's have a conversation with the business about this. If we have multiple complaints after, you know, having some education and a conversation and it's still not being resolved, then we would issue a citation. We have not done that so far.
Okay. I, that sounds great. I'm glad. But I'll take it a step further. If those citations were being issued, and I'll, I'll shut this down in a second and I didn't mean to go down this road. I was watching the Creighton game the other day. We had 15, at least 15,000 people in a confined area. And as they span the crowd, you got half the people were in masks and half not. I didn't say this the other day to put you on the spot and I'm not saying it now to put you on the spot. I, with all due respect to, to, to a lot of the opinions on both sides of the aisle, I think it's superfluous. I really do. I mean, if you can't, and I, and I, and I retread back to almost four weeks ago, three and a half weeks ago. You put something in place like this, you do this to people and you have to enforce it. And the thing that scared me a little bit about what we did under those circumstances is those penalties were very steep. But yet, but yet in the CHI Health Center, we get over 15,000 people in a building. And if they decide that they want to have a beer or a Coke, they don't put a mask on for two and a half hours. And so, I sound like I'm preaching. I, I go back to what we, you and I were talking about before. And that is in about eight hours from the time that you and I were talking, we were going to implement a mask mandate. And I feared that we wouldn't have the appropriate enforcement. I'm not patting myself on the back. I'm not saying, Mike, you were right, but this still concerns me. We've got another week of this mask mandate and I can probably speak for almost everybody in here. I've walked into places in Omaha. I've asked managers. I've, I've tested this thing. And it's, it's strange to me, Dr. Hughes. I, I guess that's my point. And I, I'm concerned about it. I, I don't really know what to do about it because I know that the sheriff's department, at least I feel that the sheriff's department and the Omaha Police Department are not going to issue those citations. And if they do, they're going to be there about eight hours late. So it's, it's still a concern. It, it'll remain a concern as long as any city is, is putting these type of things on people, that enforcement mechanism is key. So I'd like to hear other thoughts, but that's, those are my thoughts as far as I can go. Thank you.
One minute.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, you still have one minute.
I know, but Dr. Hughes, thanks for the information. Dr. Hughes, thanks for the information and thanks for your dialogue. I mean, I guess the bottom line is the concerns still remain and I just wanted to let you know, I, I appreciate the dialogue that you and I have going back and forth.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner, just like Commissioner Maureen Boyle and then Commissioner Rogers?
So, so just an additional comment. I really, I really like it when Commissioner Friend brings these things up because to be honest with you, we have very divergent opinions on this and I, and he's a very smart guy. And so I'd like to hear kind of where he's coming from. So it really helps me feel like I can make an informed decision. So at the same time, I feel like the, the, this is a, a health issue. What I find that the mask mandate did is he's right. I mean, we can't have the sheriff's office going out to enforce these types of things. At the same time, what I've noticed, and I don't know if it's just because of the, where, where I go to the grocery store in the eastern part of town, but I do see a lot more people wearing masks, you know? So, so to me, I see it as more of a reminder, bringing it to the forefront, drawing attention to it, which it's, it sounds like a very dramatic way to do it. But if that was enough to get someone to wear a mask, to say, oh my gosh, we're supposed to wear a mask, I, I don't think there are, I think there are a lot of people who just need to be reminded of that and don't, don't feel like they're taking a political stand based on this. And so, so bottom line is I have noticed a change in behavior and, and people wearing masks in different situations that hadn't been wearing them previously. So, so I appreciate the mask mandate. And, and Commissioner Friend is right. It's, I just don't see the law enforcement going in to, to, to make this, to enforce this type of thing. But at the same time, I have seen a change just anecdotally in, in human behavior. And I think right now we're just relying on the, on human behavior and trying to do, people do the right thing for, for community members more so than making this something that's, that's vindictive or divisive. And so I appreciate it when I see people wearing masks because I know that they might just help one person not get COVID and that one person might not end up in my hospital. So to me, that's why it's important. So in, in my opinion, it acted more like, like a, a reminder. And to know that the health department is going out and having conversations with organizations that aren't, or companies, businesses that aren't, that are getting reported for not following the mask mandate, they're having conversations with them, not sending the police out, that tells me right now where, where, what the intent is. It's not to throw people in jail. It's to say, can you try to do something right for our community? Can you help us try to handle this to keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed? So, so that's what it boils down to for me. But again, I really appreciate it when, when my colleague brings these things up because it, it just shoots at things from another angle to me. So.
I do too. I very much appreciate the dialogue. And I do want to just very quickly speak to the fines under the enforcement. That was, that is actually set out in the city code evidently. That was not something that I even had the, the ability to change. So, you know, knowing that that is a pretty, it's a pretty steep fine. You know, we're not, we're not here to, to penalize people left and right and have, have this hammer that we're bringing down on people. We really, we just need more tools to help keep our community on the, on the track to getting this thing under control. And in no way do we want, you know, our businesses and their employees to be put in a bad place with that. And so it, it's good for everyone if we just have a conversation. Yeah.
I agree. Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Let it be known, I'm smiling under my mask because I want to entertain Commissioner Friend on this. I usually would. Aggie makes his points, which is good, but I want to build on what Commissioner Boyle said too, because the comparison that's made is that if somebody's in CHI Center and they're drinking a beer and they're eating, it's clearly within the law to do that. But if we want to get into the fact of enforcing the laws, I mean, I speed every day and I know I'm over the speed limit and nobody stops me. I jaywalk across the street every day and the police sees me, a sheriff sees me.
That one I've seen.
Jaywalk across the street. That's not in the law. And sometimes I even throw gum out the window or some people throw trash and that's against the law. So I just bring this up because I don't want anybody to have any cushion to say that this mask thing is, and it's going to be temporary than any laws we have on the book right now that they choose to enforce. There are neighborhoods where people are going 45 miles an hour in a 30 zone regularly and they know this and they're not picked up. So I just want to take this off the hook that enforcement is not a rationale for putting the law in place. Because there's things we let go all the time. I mean, attorneys have decided to not do low level weed offenses because of the thing that it is. So it's, it's a guidepost. It's a way to get there. And I just want to build that on what Commissioner Boyle said. Thank you.
Thank you. No other lights? I think that's a good note to end. But thank you.
Thank you for the entertainment today.
For the update. And hopefully we'll continue to see that downward trend. Next is a public hearing. We have a resolution to approve a preliminary and final plat for Lydic Tinkham, a subdivision located at Section 12 Township 16, approximately 280th Street and Highway 36. And Mr. Forrest is here today with us. Hello?
Morning Commissioners. Dave Forrest, Planning and Zoning Coordinator, Douglas County. Last year, we came before you and this board approved an amendment to the zoning regulations to allow heliports in agriculturally zoned land. And at the same time, we also, Hexcon Helicopters also asked for a special use permit to set up a heliport on agriculturally zoned land. And you approved that. And so Hexcon Heliport is in the position of moving to a new piece of property in Western Douglas County. And they submitted a subdivision plan before the planning commission and it was approved. We had a public hearing and they've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. And this is here for your consideration this morning.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak during this public hearing? No one on Zoom wishing to speak during this public hearing? I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to committees, the first being the finance, the budget report as presented, unless anyone, either Commissioner Morgan or Friend has a comment. Next is the item that was from the consent agenda, resolution approving the Carlson West Pavanda Architects for Douglas County Correctional and Community Mail Health Center Programming Study. And this was an item that came about from an ARPA meeting that we had specifically on mental health and how we move forward with a project for our Community Mail Health Center and Corrections. During that meeting, Sherry Glassnap, the Director of Community Mail Health and the Director, Mike Myers from Corrections, spoke on the issue. We had discussion around those that were in the room. And again, the point was is to try to figure out how to move forward so that we could figure out what we're actually talking about and then determine what amount of money we would be looking at and investing from our ARPA funds. So this is the first step in that direction to do that. Jerry Leahy from Public Properties is here if there's any questions. But I will open it up for discussion right now. Commissioner Rod, Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I shared some concerns with our chair last week, just to let her know kind of where I'm at. So I'll go ahead and share some of those here today as briefly as I can. Initially, I was a little surprised to see this on, on our agenda as I didn't quite feel we actually reached the consensus at the 12-6 ARPA meeting, committee meeting. I know that the topic was brought up and my colleague, Commissioner Morgan, brought up the need to have more public discussion, probably at a board meeting, before launching into studies and designs. And my colleague Friend brought up the need to see if there's other public partners or any kind of partner in general, in general, that could jump into a potential partnership to address either mental health expansion or mental health in general in our community so the county doesn't go in alone on a potential expansion or initiative. So, and then I, I shared some concerns about the, the connotation of having a, a mental health facility right next to the, the county jail and a few other items that I shared. So I didn't quite feel there was a consensus at that meeting, but that is just kind of my opinion on that. So I was a little surprised to see this resolution on the consent agenda today. But in general, some other supplemental items I want to briefly bring up is, I would love for us to actually engage in some of those conversations with potential partners before really designing a scope of work and designing architectural designs for either, as the proposal says, standalone facility, et cetera. You know, we haven't really had those, the conversations with UNMC and Dr. Gold, who said he was willing to engage in such a conversation about potential partnership in the future. Other partners could be CHI, Community Alliance, other nonprofits that are heavily invested in mental health in the community. So I'd love to have those partner conversations first before kind of delving into the scope of work. We haven't seen any figures to potential program expansion. We talked about more beds for correctional inmates to utilize that would come with also more staffing. So without seeing what, what would such an expansion cost, I have concerns of taking that first step in that direction before seeing any hard numbers. I would love for the seven of us, there was only four board members at that 12-6 meeting. I would love for the seven of us to really engage in this conversation. And if there is a majority that is interested in the possibility of utilizing virtually all of our 55 million or so ARPA funds in 2020, 2022 towards this effort, and I would respect that. But I, I would really love to have that conversation between the seven of us to really define the will of the board very clearly on that possibility. On top of that, you know, with the possibility of 55, 60 million or so towards a new building, is, is that option even a good option right now under the economic signs of potential plateau or even a downward track in property values in the future alongside revenue streams going down? We know that our inheritance tax revenue will be declining in the future. We see legislation at the state level that might put more cost on the county in the future. So I just really am hesitant on the option that was discussed at 12-6 meeting of a potential expansion, a new building alongside corrections. I know that the possibility exists to renovate a building, maybe at 42nd Center, that could be a mental health expansion. That I would be willing to consider at the moment. But again, it's a part of the larger discussion that I would love the board to engage in. I know that my time is running up here, so.
Oh, sorry, one minute.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The scope of work in Phase One in the proposal says that they would have key interviews with key county leaders in Corrections with the Health, Public Properties. I would love for us to really engage again in those conversations directly instead of designating that to an architectural firm with stakeholders both in the county but also externally outside of the county to really gauge who might be a true partner in addressing mental health in our community and what would that look like before launching into design? So that's, those are a few comments on where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Yep, and, and thanks for that. Commissioner Garcia, before the meeting started, I had a brief chat with, with Jerry Leahy, our building guy. So Jerry, do you want to, we were talking about how maybe this agenda item was a little premature. And so do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Jerry Leahy, Public Property. You know, at the 12-6 ARPA meeting, I, I thought that there was a consensus to move forward with programming. And that's, that's what this is. That's what this contract is. So even if we have additional partners that you as commissioners want to have a discussion with, we still need the programming. And the programming are the needs and wants of the existing Community Mental Health Center, Sherry, and Mike Myers, Director of Douglas County Corrections. So with this study, which is fairly reasonable to get the wants and needs, it, it would, it would give you a, a tool to go into a Phase Two where you do get into discussions with partners or site specific. And that's not the case at this point. But in the end, it's the direction of the board.
And I, and I appreciate that. I think the, the thought is you're, you're trying to get this ball rolling and I, and I feel like that's a great spot to be. So I see this is the part you're thinking about, and then we're still at a point where we're thinking of this. So, so I think that this is a great start and to, to approve something like this would be, would be a good thing because then when we're ready to kick into, to that gear to get it going, we'll have the functional pieces in place. We'll have that, that evaluation already done. So. But I do agree with Commissioner Garcia in that I, I feel like we just need to think on a, a bigger picture first and do some type of strategic planning meeting about how, how are we going to approach mental health in the community? This piece right here that we're talking about is how do we approach it within the county? Like with the, the structures we have in place right now is kind of how I see it. So this is a subset of what we still have to address on a big scale. And so, so I would, I, I would actually approve this as it stands, knowing that we've got a lot of work to do on a, on a bigger scale than that. So for example, do we want to have the architects or some, somebody else consult on a larger scale to say, this is what the community needs as far as structures go? Not just what does the county need to address this specific piece? So that would be my only thought on that is we need a, a bigger idea, a big, big consulting issue happening.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Friend?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Hi, Jerry. So.
Good morning.
We've established that the, that, that a part of this, I was at that meeting in December and, and, and I do remember, thanks to Commissioner Garcia, I do remember, you know, pointing out some of those things. I did feel like there was a consensus to actually do a study when you actually brought it up. We're not trying to cover old ground here. All, all I'm saying is I do remember that conversation. The point that I wanted to make or the questions I wanted to pose, I want to know that the, that, that the study is centered around feasibility, right, for going forward? So in other words, are we going to get done? Are we, do you think, Jerry, we're going to have any information that indicates two things? One, that the key county leaders associated with this providing information to the, the, the analysts to try to figure out what the professional services are going to be needed? They'll establish that, hey, the only way you can afford this is you're, is you got to come up with some partners, right? So in other words, we can build a building. The infrastructure's done. But we got to know how we're going to be able to, the county and the taxpayer is going to be able to afford it going forward. Will that study give us a little bit of that understanding from, from an analysis standpoint, right? Does, does that make any sense?
It, it will. And here again, the departments that deal with it, they have certain needs and wants, like I said, for their particular departments. And at, at some point, you're going to get into costs depending on the number of beds, male, female. And I don't want to get into the whole analyzation because that's up to, to the architect. But at, at the end of the study, you're going to have an idea of a possible cost and what's going to be in this facility. Like I said, male, female, majority male, probably.
And Jerry, what, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine.
Your train of thought. But so the, the moral of the story is we're seven commissioners and there's a lot of things we know, but there's tons of things we don't know. If we tried to go about half of this or a portion of what we're actually looking to contract out, it, it's going to take an awful long time for, for us to get there from a professional services standpoint or whatever. So one of the conversations I had with somebody over the last 24 hours is, why can't we do some of this on our own? Why are we, why are we outsourcing it, Jerry? So.
I, I think I stated this at the ARPA meeting. Jeff and I have had some estimates, guestimates, but we're not really professionals in the field. And that's why you have studies for engineering, for our traffic studies, et cetera. And in this case, the needs and wants for mental health. So that, that was the reason. And, and, you know, we could, we could do some things, Jeff and I and the staff. But if we bring it up here, what are your qualifications? That's all I'm saying. And with this fee, and actually, I think Al Pavandra is on the Zoom, I think, or maybe by phone. If you want to get a couple of answers from him on questions that I can't answer, that, that might be helpful.
Well, that helps clear it up a little bit because I, I do remember talking about this and I, and I feel pretty adamantly about it. Not, not that anybody else does, but I do. We're not in the business, we're, at, at least predominantly in the business of healthcare at the county level. We are, but there are professionals in this. I, I call Omaha the medical industrial complex. I've been here for 55 of my 60 years. It is a huge medical environment and it, and it will remain so. And I feel strongly about the idea, if we can't have that type of partnership moving forward with community mental health, I think we're dropping the ball. That's just my opinion. And I just wanted to know that this study is going to, maybe, maybe it'll verify my thoughts or maybe it'll, you know, slap me in the back of the head and say, you're wrong again.
Time. Commissioner Morgan?
Jerry, I appreciate your modesty when you say you and Jeff don't have the expertise because I have a great respect for what you've done and do over the years. And quite a few years you two have a great partnership. Real briefly, if, if we move forward with this study, and I happen to think that Commissioner Garcia and everyone that's, has spoken before me made some great points, what am I going to hear back when the study's complete? Just briefly, the four items or whatever, in your opinion?
Well, Al, if you're on the line, would you want? Pavandra? It's not working. Can't get it?
Jeff McGill, Douglas County Public Properties. Since we can't get Al on, what this programming is, it's a starting point for the architect and owners to establish criteria to create a building. It's, it's like step one in the design process. So what we're going to see at the end is all the criteria that we've, we've heard from Community Mental Health, Corrections, and taking all that information into a document that says, if you want to build this building, renovate this building, split it into two, this is a space needs and employee count, bed count to create this facility. That's, and then we'll have a price. The confusion right now is in the, in this proposal is it's under one roof that we discussed. If we're breaking into two buildings, that fee might be a little different because we're somewhat doubling up on facilities. So we're here, the will of the board, to move in whatever direction you would like us to.
Okay, and when, when I kind of think about this and, you know, I think it's great that we're having the discussion here at the county board. I like that idea and I know I suggested that we have that discussion about it. The other part of it is, I'm concerned, you know, can we afford to take something like this on? Because yes, we have some large dollars that we can build a building and we know that building is going to cost somewhere around $375 a foot to $425. And if we said we have a building we can renovate, we're still going to spend $250 to $300 to renovate a building and make it adaptable to this. And I may be even a little bit conservative when I state these numbers. But once you have it, you know, I might be able to afford to buy a jet plane, a small jet. But I don't think I can operate it and hire the pilots and do the inspections that are required by the federal government and those kinds of things. And I have a real concern for the future, having been on the budget ever since I got on this board 11 years ago and working with Joel Lorenz, who's been here at least that same period of time. You know, we have one source of revenue and it's property taxes. And for us to kind of try to take this on ourselves, knowing that we have a serious mental health problem and we know the numbers in our correction facility and in our community, that's where I think, you know, the partnerships are so important. And I guess I feel the board ought to be the one to start to work at going out maybe to find those partnerships with CHI and Methodist and Dr. Gold at UNMC and realizing we have a need because none of those play any property taxes. So I want to be respectful.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Yeah, I share some of the same concerns of my colleagues and I'm not sure there was a consensus. I wasn't part of the December 6 meeting, but of the four commissioners there, at least one of them here today said that they weren't aware of a consensus. Be hard to have a consensus on a seven person board of only three people. Arguably, we're even in the room in consensus. But the, the bigger problem, I guess, is the wording of the study. I appreciate what public property does. I've worked with you guys and you're very competent. You do a good job. And you've proven that over the years. The thing that we saw this morning is just an indication of that. I think that you have the ability to do this. And I've worked with Pavandra and they're a good provider as well. And I think they would be appropriate to. And I think they would be appropriate to help us do the study. Problem I have is this study presupposes in its language a building, as Mr. McGill talked about here today, a design, a single facility conflating two populations of people with mental health issues. There are people in jail with mental health issues. And there are people in the community and the Douglas County Health Center with mental health issues. They're different populations, they're different communities. And it stigmatizes the people not charged with crimes to put them in the same building with people charged with crimes to get their treatment. I wouldn't want my family members to have to go down the corrections campus to get treatment for mental health conditions. It's a stigmatizing event. And we should make it clear from the outset that we're looking at two different populations, two different places. We have 42nd Street for the non-criminally involved population. And we have the corrections campus for people involved in the criminal justice system. The resolution and the documents could be easily amended to make that really clear, that we're looking at a study of at least two different campuses. And I think that it would be important for us to note that right from the beginning that we're not going to co-locate people not involved in the criminal justice system with people in jail in the same facility for treatment of their mental health conditions. The broader scope of this study would also allow us, I think, to, to bring in some of the people that Commissioner Morgan and others have indicated as collaborators. I've had discussions with different private and public mental health providers in the community regarding this collaboration, particularly on 42nd Street, where we literally have a public health corridor from 42nd and Dodge to 42nd and Center between University of Nebraska Medical Center, Douglas County Health Center and VA that collaborate. We don't compete. We have plenty of facilities and resources. Those discussions, I think, can easily be had with Dr. Gold and, and others at UNMC. The private providers in the community, like the Community Alliance people, have reached out to us with offers to collaborate and provide resources and share resources and work with the populations that we currently serve on an outpatient basis on 42nd Street. They're excited about our campus on 42nd Street and we should bring them in at this stage to collaborate on this study. It could be really a national model if it is done correctly. So I guess, you know, the, the bottom line is the study is appropriate. It needs to make it clear that we're not just studying somebody's idea for a building on a corrections campus housing two distinctly different populations and stigmatizing one by locating them with the others. That's just right from the start, something that we should make really clear. And then get on with the study. I think Mr. McGill has talked to the Pavandra people about a very minor adjustment that they would have to make perhaps in their fee to accommodate looking at both campuses. And Public Property has had oversight of these campuses for a very long time and are intimately aware of what is there and the capacities. And they also have the experience of overseeing upgrades of existing county facilities very effectively with no cost overruns, on time, on budget and no tax increases. And so I think taking all that together here at the start, we can make a really good start with a very minor adjustment to this proposal to make it clear that we're looking at multiple.
Commissioner Friend?
Not single solutions.
Madam Chair. I think Al.
Jerry, go ahead. Jerry, can you use my time if you want to apply?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I think Al Pavandra is on the line. Al?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Were you able to hear the discussion recently?
Yeah, I, I apologize that I am out of town today and not, not able to, not able to appear. And I finally figured out how to use my iPhone through, through your conference. So again, I apologize for all that.
Go ahead and comment on it.
I'm here to answer any questions that you, you might want to throw my way.
Okay, Commissioner Friend?
Well, I'll continue real quick. I mean, this is good discussion. We, I, I don't think, just so everybody's, just so we're all clear. I, I do think that this, this study, I believed it was warranted then, I believe it's warranted now. The only question I think, and I, again, I don't want to assume that I've got it all wrapped up in one big ball here, but I think the big question is, what are we going to get? Al, and you can weigh in on this if you'd like. What are we getting at the end of this? Is it going to indicate some of the things or is it going to give us an idea of some of the questions that Commissioner Kavanaugh posed or Commissioner Garcia posed? Maybe some of the thoughts that Commissioner Morgan has thrown out? What are we going to see at the end of this? Because here's the thing, we spend money off of consent file every week, our consent, the consent calendar every week, without really drilling too deep. As a matter of fact, we're, we're spending $140,000 right before we got to this item. So this amount of money has been not necessarily appropriated, but it's sitting in general fund. It's not ARPA money. We know, we, we, at least we feel like we need a study done to try to get a better grasp on what's going on. But Al, I'd like you to weigh in. What are we going to see at the end of this? Are we going to see an understanding of how 42nd Street might fit into it? Are we going to see an understanding of what a standalone building would cost us? Are we going to see an understanding of how effective, how effective services like this from the county level, being dispersed from the county level, how effective we're going to be at actually funding it? Are we going to see some of those things at the end?
Well, I, I don't want to overstate this, the scope of this work. What this, what this study is proposing to do is to create a foundation of space needs and costs for a model program addressing county needs. Now, that doesn't mean that as time goes on and you engage other, other partner, potential partners, that they could weigh on what their potential needs. This is basically a Douglas County study looking at, at, at needs that Sherry has and needs that Mike have on the, on the correctional side and creating a model space program for, for a new facility. Now, we do have a second phase proposed and we don't know what that second phase is. For instance, if you said, yes, we, we'd like to convert the youth detention center on 42nd Street into, into a mental health facility for the entire community of Omaha, that would be probably be a, a, a part of the second phase. Second phase is determining, okay, here's, here's, the first phase is the model program. Here's what Douglas County mental health needs are, both for community, the obligations for the community mental health for Douglas County and for the corrections mental health for the county. What, what are those needs? What kind of space do we need in an, in an ideal program? And then phase two would be if you said and decided that you wanted to pursue in addition to the correction center or, or, or converting 42nd Street, the, the former youth detention center into a model facility, that would then adjust that program. For instance, a model program would include food service, a kitchen. In, in, at 42nd Street, you, you have kitchen served from, from the hospital. At, 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 at the correction center, you have, you have a, a kitchen service correction center. So there, there might be elements in a model program that would be pulled out in phase two, depending on which direction you wanted to head with, with, with the actual build out. What you're going to get in phase one is looking at Douglas County mental health correction needs, both community and corrections. And, and then coming up with a, a model space program and putting a cost, how much would that cost to build today with inflation and contingency?
Okay, thanks, Al, and thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. I think that's good.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I think a couple of quick edits of the resolution could maybe help us get to a way forward. In the resolution, it talks about Douglas County's desirous of engaging programming services for Douglas County Corrections dash Community Health Service Project. That should be projects, plural, separate services, separate projects, to develop a criteria model for space. That should be criteria model for space. If we eliminate a and we add projects to project, I think that we broaden the scope of this in the resolution. In the Pavandra documents, the letter from Mr. Pavandra to Public Property says that the, we offer Douglas County a wealth of experience in both corrections and mental health care design. So obviously, they have the expertise to give us two distinct corrections and regular mental health design. And then in the scope of professional services in the same document on page three, they reference this program will be based on a standalone model facility, singular, on a hypothetical site, singular. And clearly, we're talking about two different facilities on two different sites, not co-locating population in jail, charged with crimes, with the civilian population who have simple mental health concerns. The scope of professional services on the same page in B1 says in phase one, to be located on a specific site, again, singular, or to a repurposed building, again, singular. And that could easily be amended to say, to be located on specific sites and/or repurposed buildings. Just make it clear from the beginning that we're looking at two different populations in two different areas. We have a campus for the mental health population currently. We have a campus for the criminal justice-involved individuals currently, separate. I, I think, you know, if we go there, we've got a good start here. So I guess that would be my suggestion to make that amendment to the resolution, which is change project to projects and change a criteria to criteria and move forward.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, to some of the concerns, I think this gets there. You know, I wasn't at the meeting in the room. I was on Zoom for a minute. And, you know, my understanding is you need the study to answer all the questions that were presented. Once you get an idea of the program and then you know where you're at. But I think this thing has been trying to be reframed. I don't remember any discussion about saying two projects. I don't remember discussion about even, I mean, there's been rumors, but nobody's really talked about a space because you need this. And I think it needs to be dispelled right now that you're talking about collate, co-locating. You can't co-locate a facility like this. That's, because reason number one, you're not, you're not going to co-locate a facility like this because you don't get, you won't get Medicaid, you won't get Medicaid reimbursement. Because we can't get Medicaid reimbursement for people in the jail now for health services. So that will not happen. Because the whole thing is if we put this facility somewhere, you're going to have to move the program and you already have to be able to get that paid there. So all this framing up about trying to make it seem like you're trying to create another jail is not it. You're creating the facility. So wherever it is, I think you got to have the study to be able to gauge, the programming study to gauge what capacity you need. Now, there's been concerns brought up about some other community members. We just had five mental health sessions where we got input from vast amounts of community that wanted to be there. So that input's there. Delaying this doesn't get us any closer to some degree and for the government to some degree. You know, the, the land and all of that value, I don't think that really matters at any space because if they hear a government is going to buy, they're going to jack the price up anyway. I mean, that's been consistent with everything I've ever been around to some degree. So I just say that this puts us a step further. The 35 is a small amount. You, we're not going to sit around the table anymore and figure this out. And, you know, the comments have been made. I mean, if I'm right, my understanding in the past is that Public Properties has never took on a project like this where they totally managed it. Somebody's managed it to some degree and they've been involved. It ain't like all of this is happening in-house. So this is consistent with everything we've done to some degree. So, you know, I would say, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it was consensus totally, but I think there was an agreement to some degree. So the, the programming piece has to happen to get an idea for the space. And I just want to reiterate again, this framing up of making it seem like you're trying to build something to have, how I am hearing it, this joint facility where you're going to have people that are mentally ill in jail in there. That, I, at least personally, I don't see that happening because you can't get the services financed. That's the same thing you have in juvenile corrections and adult corrections is that if it is a corrections facility, you can't get reimbursement for the services. And that's the main core where we're getting reimbursement for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, after listening to all of my colleagues too, I, a part of me thinks that we were, we need to see the forest through the trees a little bit. And so I, I feel like that we may be a little bit premature or early on doing a, a study like this, the more I listen to this. As Commissioner Rogers had stated, there were some amazing mental health listening sessions done within the past year. And in those, especially when community members spoke, you could really hear what community needs are. And those are separate from what Douglas County needs are. So Douglas County, we need to address mental health in our, at our mental health center and all, and also at our correction center. But the community needs more than that. And I, I think for that reason, we actually need a, a strategic plan, a, a big picture that incorporates the Douglas County's needs and community needs. I think that, to be honest, we probably need a, a separate meeting to kind of get down into the nuts in both of this, kind of like how we have our ARPA meetings. Maybe at that point, we need a, like a high-level consultant. I, I love the architect idea, but I feel like we need someone who can really draw it out for us to help us, to help set direction, learn what we can do, not only just in the, the county portion of it, but also learn about how we can take those community partners and, and, and bring them, bring them involved. And so I feel like we're, we might be missing, missing that piece. I feel like we need to just step back and go big picture at this point. And I, I feel like we need some, some guidance to do that. So, so I'd appreciate input based on that as well.
Commissioner Garcia and then Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you. Just, we're hearing a different framing. So I'll just allow the Public Properties to, to go ahead and reiterate what is the actual framing here that we should be looking at. So, because, you know, it says Douglas County Correctional dash Community Mental Health Project, singular. And I, I believe that singular is intentional. I think towards the beginning of your speech, I heard the words joint facility. So can you frame it for us? What is the actual framing of this project and potential building?
Well, Jeff McGill, Public Properties. What we thought the intent was, when we left the meeting, to have it under one facility, which follows Mr. Myers and Sherry's request. Therefore, that's why this is wrote up this way. That's not saying during this programming, we'll still have the same information if one goes one way, one goes the other way. But at least we'll have the information, the criteria that's needed for the facility. Now, the other component is outside needs for the community and that's not included. I don't think we really discussed that stage. So that's not included in this proposal.
Okay, so I'm still hearing joint facility. And, you know, even though we, we did have community input sessions, that doesn't necessarily answer the potential tangible partnerships that could be in play if we had direct leadership-level discussions with people like UNMC, Dr. Gold, et cetera. So we, we've heard what the need is in the community, but we need to actually be leaders that are reaching out to other leaders in the community, especially other public partners, maybe private partners, to see what the tangible is. Like maybe UNMC says, yes, we can tangibly commit to this or that or the other, or maybe we can't commit to anything at all. So I would like to still gauge all of that first. So I would like to still gauge all of that first, also clarify some of the framing, because we're still, you know, you just mentioned that it, it does conceptualize a joint facility. I do recall at the 12-6 meeting, the framing that it would be next to the correctional facility potentially, to have that kind of partnership in their speech that they gave us as to partners and co-directors of different departments at the county. So some of that may need to be further clarified, which I would love to explore a little bit further before really greenlighting a study. And one final quick note, something, a new small piece, but an important piece to me, you know, since there was discussion of a possible, this project being next to Corrections physically, you know, that part of town is a part of the urban core that the chamber and the city are working on to economically develop and provide more, you know, economic stimulation to that part of town, which is our own downtown here in Douglas County, City of Omaha. You know, my question would be, have we ever had discussions with the small businesses and the neighbors that live there, the residents that live there in that area, along Leavenworth, along 16th Street? You know, would they invite and want another building, such a project, in their neighborhood that could take up another block next to Corrections? You know, their opinions also matter to me as well. So it's a balance. Of course, we want to help address mental health. Of course, we want to listen to our department leadership. But we also need to engage local neighbors and community members in that area as well to see what they would welcome into their neighborhood with a potential expansion and new building as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, based on the comments that's said, I think, you know, I respect the fact that individuals think we have some more study to do, but I think we got the feedback from everybody. And there's a point that was made by Commissioner Morgan about cost, which I think basically clears a couple of things out. There's only one space that we can play in, I think, in the mental health piece, and that's the space that we're in now, with the acute piece and the community-based care. Now, there's been a lot of conversations about more chronic, long-term bids. The county is not going to play in that realm. It was never set up for the county to be in that realm. That's clearly the state's realm. And if we were to even get in a realm like that, it's not like you, this philosophy of you build it and they're going to come. You can build that. The state's got to agree to pay for it. Now, that's something we not paying for, and that will break our back. The community-based piece and what we're doing now, we already are doing. I think the conversation is about how do you can, how do you increase that and where the space is. This conversation about, this is just my opinion, I am not an architect, but just sense-wise, I don't know what you're going to rehab at 42nd. There not enough space there. You're not going to rehab that facility and make it a mental health facility. That's an enormous cost. And so this, this framing of it as if that's an option is not. I don't know where it's going to be. But I do know you have to do the study to find out what is there. And you can't talk, because you got four different things going on right now in the community. You got children's asking for a child-type psychiatric deal. You got CHI. You got community alliance. You got the building that's going on 50th that we are not directly aligned with, but that benefits us. And then you got the conversation we're having. If you don't have the study, you can't begin to know who you're going to talk to, because certain people are in certain businesses. So this study is the beginning to knowing where it's at now. You know, I don't think we, you talking about spending money, we're not talking about getting anything new. I think the talk is the capacity. We are in that last resort piece where somebody ends up here. So I don't think there's a lot of, we've heard some of the input where people are wanting to go, and I think it's been clear that if there's something, we don't go on a particular piece, there's several things we can play in. But we can't know who you're going to partner with or what this place or location will be until you know what the service need is to move. And, you know, the jockeying right now for mindset is, I think, is a way ahead of that. I think if you get the study, you can get an idea of where we want to go and answer the questions. If we delay this, this just delays a, 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 an answer that you need to get another point. The study to me puts you in a position to have the strategic plan in peace and have the discussion. You can't walk into a strategic plan and peace without this and the options. So there's one option we really got to go. The question is to see what I think that we're able to go into that is not a tremendous amount of new costs. And I think you got to have this piece to have the discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Morgan?
Madam Chairman, may I speak?
I'm sorry, who's? Oh, yes, Mr. Pavandra, go ahead.
I, I, so, to me, this discussion is, is, is talking about mental health needs for the entire community. That was really never the intention of this programming study. This program study has to do, was a correctional mental health programming study. When you look at what Sarpy County's building, Sarpy County Jail's building, when you look at what we just programmed for the state of, state of Nebraska, when you look at what Lancaster County did for, for their mental health inmates, there was a comment about not being able to be, the jail mental health obligations is not eligible to be reimbursed. And that, my understanding is that's a very true statement. What Sherry has on the fifth floor of, of the Douglas County Health Center, and it's tentative what, what is going to be in the future, but that is based on getting reimbursement. At the jail, there is not reimbursement. So this program study looks at Douglas County's obligation to hold inmates. And, and as, as we all know, that, that mental health in corrections is, is a, is a larger and larger obligation and burden. And so what this, this study was looking at, was, was talking to Mike about his capacity needs for, for the jail and, and using Sherry's expertise as, as a mental health practitioner to, to come up with the, the, the right mix. And by the way, it's not just a study with Carlson West Pavander Architects, we're also teaming up our partners as Altus, who actually has done psychiatric facilities all over the country, including the Mayo Clinic. So our team was looking at providing the best possible mental health scenario for Douglas County Corrections. That's basically what this study is. Now, there are other needs that you have, and I think there was, there is move to try to expand this program study into looking at community needs, which, which we certainly can do if that's what you wanted to do. But this, this study and the amount for this study was really focused on Douglas County's correctional mental health obligations going, going forward. So I'm hope, I'm hoping that's, that's clearing up a couple of things on what, what our intention was for the study.
Thank you, Mr. Pavandra. Commissioner Morgan?
Well, that was helpful. That does clear it up that we're talking just about the corrections. And I appreciate what Commissioner Rogers also added to this. So I'm not sure if we need further discussion or not about this. And this study should be comprehensive to get the information to then take a look. With the state and what Sarpy County's doing, would we be talking with all of them also, I'm assuming, as you go through this study process? And I was not intending just 42nd, I'm just wondering how close to the correction facility, and there may be some existing property that could work. I don't know that, so.
So if I could interject here, because I, I think all of the comments that have been made from commissioners right now is, it, it is making it the reason why we have to do this study. And the same, I mean, we can have another meeting and talk about the same things that we just talked about at this meeting and at the December meeting and at meetings prior to that and get nowhere. And this meeting basically, and that's why I specifically had Sherry and Mike come to that meeting, so that we could hear and have involvement from staff, which has been a criticism of previous projects, to have them at the table to tell us what we should do, what are our next steps. And if you remember, Sherry stating 50% of the Community Mayo Health Center staff work in conjunction with Corrections. And so their idea is to, let's talk, let's sit down and talk and see how this collaboration and cooperation could work. Again, the main focus was rising the Community Mayo Health Center out of our long-term care facility, which it should not be there, and placing it someplace else. We don't know where. And I don't think we're even at a point to begin talking where, because we don't even know what it is yet we're talking about. And that's what this study, this study does for us, is it sits, it has the experts sit down with our staff and give us a better outlook of a programmatic schematic design, if you will, as to what their intentions are to provide us recommendations on how we should move forward. So again, it's, it's the very, very first stage to get us off the dime of continually going around and around and around on the same issues that we can't answer because we don't, we, we just, we don't have the answers. So we, we start asking the same questions or we make the same comments, and we come to the same point of, well, let's just talk about this a little more. Well, to talk about it a little more, let's just get a little bit more specific in what exactly our community corrections director and our corrections director are talking about in terms of that collaboration and cooperation. And so to me, you all, you have all made excellent comments today and points as to why this is needed at this point. For bringing in community partners, we could bring them in and we'd be talking, and the way we're talking, and they wouldn't even know what we're talking about. And so, so let's get our ducks in a row. Let's see what they can come up with, and then let us respond to that, and let us then begin to start talking about who those community partners are that we could bring in, if any, that want to partner with us on this project. So again, it, I think everything that everybody has said today has made the absolute point that that's why this study is needed, and that's why we should be moving forward with it. And that's all it is. That's all it is at this point. And it's, and it's working with both of our directors of both of the programs in which we're talking about, our services we're talking about. So with that, I think everybody has spoken twice, and so Larry, did you want to make a comment?
Please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Larry Storey, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I appreciate all your discussions today because it points up something. And please don't cut me off, I won't take long. First of all, is this, words matter, rules matter. Back and forth, how many times, for how long each time? A citizen thinks that you get five minutes, maybe twice. A citizen gets five if he doesn't get cut off. I think Mr. Rogers went back three or four times.
Larry, to the agenda item.
Just a minute, please.
To the agenda item.
Let me finish this.
No, to the agenda item.
Rule of order is a, open meetings act, maybe possibility.
Larry, I've never asked you to leave.
One second, please, you cut me off earlier.
Get to the agenda item.
All right, give me two seconds.
Get to the agenda item.
If we don't know what we're talking about, ma'am, we shouldn't be talking.
We do know.
Why don't we bring the community partners in here for a meeting? I'm talking about it now, okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
So sit still, sir, I'm talking about this. Let's bring the community partners in here.
Okay, great.
Let's find out who they are, what the programs are, because we're not hearing that here. Now, how many community partners are you talking about? Some from out of state with best practices? Why can we not have this long of a debate in these chambers in front of the citizen?
Thank you.
Don't spend the money.
Thank you, Larry.
Build more buildings and skywalks.
Thank you, Larry. Any other questions or comments? What is the will of the board with this agenda item? Is there a second? There's a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes five to two, Commissioners Kavanaugh and Garcia, but no other commissioners voting yes.
We'll move on to Human Resources, the weekly personnel report as presented. And then we have our legislative report in the packet. We are watching a few of the legislative items. Again, it's been quite interesting this year to watch what's going on down there. But we will probably have more to take a position on next week. So with that, we do not have need for an executive session. Do you have something on legislation, Larry?
To very quickly wind up on the legislative issue of LR14 and what Mr. Justin Wayne brought into the discussion in the state legislature. This was a discussion about a constitutional, a proposed amendment process. But Mr. Justin Wayne came in there and I was there, or I'm sorry, I was listening to him on ETV. And I find this quite ridiculous. We're into CRT now at the state legislature during a debate on the floor about LR14. All of a sudden, oh, well, you know what? It's disparity because Justin Wayne was not there in 1797, 87. He was not in the room when they closed the doors and rewrote the Constitution. Yeah, and also, the women were not there, he said, in 1787. So I guess he meant, he didn't use the words, but some of it's right here in the state record, and it is on the video, that blacks weren't represented, women were not represented, therefore, they've changed their theory of how they're going to defeat LR14. Now they want a full, open debate so that race and equity and disparity can be debated. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to stop this stuff. That has nothing to do with a citizen's right to propose an amendment. Not my fault that he wasn't in the room. He's putting words in citizens' mouths, and he gets by with it. He shouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. With that, we do not have need for an executive session today. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero, are adjourned at 11:28 a.m.